Our regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners in the City of Bonnaroo today is September 9th, 2024, and at 6:30 we're here in the Commissioners' Chambers in the Municipal Building. Go ahead and call it order and determine if Torm is present.
Commissioner Sebastian Martinez.
Here.
Commissioner Regis Mon.
Here.
Mayor Pizmore.
Here.
Mayor McSwan.
All right, please rise for the inpatient led by Commissioner Torm, followed by the President of the City.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for having us to get together again for our regular meeting in the City of Bonnaroo. Help us make the right decisions, good decisions in a good city. Bless everyone that is here who goes today. We ask this in your name. Amen. President of the City.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, President of the City.
I'm Rain Martinez. Hi, good evening everybody. I'm Rain Martinez. I live on Rice Lane. I've been here many years in Bonnaroo. I'm here to ask the city about high-speed internet. I want to ask that the city create a plan with high-speed internet to the remaining residents of Bonnaroo. I know we did Phase One that did Rich Quest, quarter horse area in Benton City Road. I did an open request to see, open records request to get more information about what happened, where the project stood, where ended. And the original grant was over $319,000. Three checks were written for the amount of $154,000, and that was it. I'm asking that the remaining balance be utilized for Phase Three to bring the internet to the rest of the residents. Or if it was moved to somewhere else, I would like it to be allocated back to utilize to continue the process of getting high-speed internet for the community. Another thing I want to ask is that the citizens be kept in the loop. It kind of dropped off. And I know there was a lot of changes going on, but if we kept the loop on the Phase Three beginning project, any timeframes, next steps, you know, via social media newsletter, who the city is currently utilizing methods to communicate, and that's all I wanted to bring up today. Thank you very much.
All right, we're here for item number one, consent agenda. We have Item A, approval of minutes, and B, approval of police department reporting statistics. All right. Oh, that's.
One A B.
Got you. There's been a motion to approve the consent agenda, Items A and D is the second.
Motion.
Item has been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. All right, number two, approval of financial updates. Overall, I just got a few notes and a few questions. We can talk about that. I just went through. We had our operational items overall so far. So this on the report, it shows September 1st, and it's August 31st. Okay, so August 31st. So about one more month. So not final numbers, but we are a bit short on revenue. The good news though, if I have expenses, at least folks in my payment and the general fund, our general fund expenses so far through the end of August, still one more month, are about $431,000 less than we expected, which is a phenomenal number. I'd be curious what invoices we still need. So I noticed our legal bill hasn't changed much.
It's been due, so I'm gonna ask if they're doing it.
Okay, so it's basically.
It was $40,000, $41,000.
Okay. I'd be curious what else like state court costs look low? Would that be just the next quarter?
Well, it's at the end of September, so, and then I think that one will be over.
And that's part of that budget because you've already paid some things, so.
But so where we're currently, where we're at right now.
Wow, so really under. I guess that's to get you to catch up.
Yeah, remember we have seven of those public records. So it's not necessarily the reflects, it's just.
Not insurance is higher, really?
Insurance is higher.
Overall, that's, let's see.
And I even asked about the last insurance being a little involved. You weren't expecting. That wasn't a joke, man, that was from the last.
So that's why I looked. I didn't have any other questions or comments on the financial update than what we else did. All right, so entertain a motion. If you'd like to approve, make a motion to approve the financial update. Motion's been made to approve the financial update as the second. Item has been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. All right. As a point of privilege, I'd like to move on to item number 15, which is discussion on need for broadband in Bonnaroo. You have said something here, spoke on this topic. We have a lot of other items that might take some time. If anybody objects, I'd like to proceed with item 15.
No, I just, I don't know.
Let me read it. Yeah, I want to move it. So if there's no here, just a point of privilege to move this up. I'll read it in. Number 15, discussion on need for broadband in Bonnaroo. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, well, yes. Well, they're, they're a separate entity, but.
I've got two pieces of information that are not directly to this broadband, and I've got some questions on that too. But recently, Bear County, and I got this from Spectrum, so recently Bear County approved a southern Bear County that will help bring the internet infrastructure to areas that don't have it. That wouldn't be until 2026. So we put in these systems, kind of all here in this area. At one time, it was considered over there, but it ended up not being over there. It was part of the plans, but we ended up getting internet spectrum over here, so it's at least there as far as, you know, potentially further trying to incentivize that process. Yes, for some reason. But we did look into that option. However, I would be curious where we are, if there's funds that are unspent, where those are.
There's three unspent.
So there was never part of the plan to begin with, for Rice Lane and Tray Walls.
None of us were here.
We weren't here.
The city got, the city got a 319,000 grant. They got 157,000, which was one, 157,000. It was part of the COVID, like revenue replacement money. But Texas has a department being established that's directly, I cannot think of what the name of this, but it's like the Department of Internet Infrastructure, something like that. The federal government should use a lot of funds so that areas like us can get broadband. So does everyone have anything to apply to?
And we should look at the cost. So, you know, what would be needed to take what we're running up here to Rice Lane and Tray Walls, which they all run scale.
I believe this is what? This is AT&amp;T-based grant that the fighter is actually AT&amp;T?
Uh, I'm not sure.
This is AT&amp;T, maybe they are not AT&amp;T.
My other spectrum here, there's fiber entrance in front of those. I don't know how good the service is. I don't use it.
I know that they are on their own. They're expanding their fiber presence and, um, but I'll give them the timeline for it.
Well, say on personal note, I have either David Bright or that. I have Starlink. And if it wasn't available at the time, and just, I don't know, the person that you did load, my mind had a great descent, and it is starting, it's incredible, it's fast. I really feel value everything on it, and it's just incredible. No interest involved. My personal experience, it's not all with.
Yeah, I just, I just need to start building something. I'm aware that Bear County needs to decide and stop something.
I wonder if it might even be cheaper to look at how we can help with the Starlink route, other than the poles themselves. If I recall, I think it was $20,000 per pole, which serviced a certain radius. Yeah, that Starlink's for $50. And it's $20,000 and then $50 a month, or something. If we do look into it exactly, but I had thought when I first got there, is there a way we could have like some kind of credit process where we can assist with citizens since spending the $20,000 per pole? Which I agree, why should some of the city get it, and others not? It's not fair.
Especially since we're viper key.
And we've already done it, you know, so I'd be curious if there's something we can look at there that might be lower cost and better potentially. I don't know. But let's look at all of our options. Let's do that. Do you need a motion to be directed? Is there fiber? Any further discussion? We took the. When, I asked them this, when they first put it in, and this was before Digo Fiber, when they first put it in, I went out there, someone was like, hey, we're bringing the internet. I was so excited. And they said, oh, no, it's gonna keep going. We're not putting a node here. There was no nodes. They just kept going. I don't know where this Digo Fiber is getting, did they put it in there?
Well, no, they put it. So they have an office in our building as part of the, because they had to put it from our presence here. So all of our internet can go everywhere.
So they just wanted to.
That pole would make a deal go.
Well, look at all the options. I don't know if that was given to fiber. I don't use it. I don't. I'd be curious if we took a pole, who uses it and likes it? I know it's a line of sight service. And when I looked into it over here, we ended up not going with it because it was line of sight. I think it was 150 megabits versus fiber was like 400. So we went the route, put it in the bottom, which was, so we had.
So I believe you're correct, but they're upgrading to that now.
Right. Whatever we can do, I agree at a percent. Let's try and break that back. And let's do some living research. Okay, plan. So I put on the agenda, discussed it last week at our workshop. As we have a dread sound, we have a lot more work to do. Going back, I had to realize today, we just have a public hearing, but we're not ready yet. We've got to make some revisions. I think we just spend some time with it and with Brandon to get, you know, updated. However, just going through the process and some of the feedback that we've got from the development community, both personal experiences. I'm starting to be concerned about water capacity. Something that spoke with Ida about, and she suggested we put it on the agenda to direct her to put together a plan. I would like to be recognized to speak to that of what questions for us, of what specific direction you would need.
Yeah, I think it was the conversation that we had that you've reached out to Adiscosa, and they're gonna, they're wanting to charge us an astronomical amount to now bring their water through. So I think we need to look at other options, SARS and so forth. So, and the last time we did this was back in 2014, I think. So yes, sir, and things have changed. And so I want to, you know, look back at that and update our plan. And then, you know, as we're doing with grants and things like that, maybe there's some options there too, but I think we need to open the door back to SARS as well and see if there's, you know, some synergy there too. And maybe go back to Adiscosa too and say, okay, let's take a deeper dive in this. If we have a plan, then, you know, if we come at it stronger, if we've looked at it, know what we want, and then that way we can kind of start making those agreements with people, so.
And knowing like what our future need is for that. Is it just the draft plan, and I'm assuming it would change astronomically between what our draft version is versus what it is today? I don't want you to waste time and start it now, but I'm starting to concern this is evolving on a roll.
Absolutely, right. And, you know, with sewer coming in, we want water to be right behind it, you know. So we want to be planning now and thinking about the future, so maybe we can have them coming in and, I don't know, but, you know, let's, let's not wait. Let's continue to plan and move forward. So it's a living and breathing plan. You know, we can adjust as needed, but let's get it on paper. And then let's see what we can do with it to start talking to our entities, the local ones, he's running, SARS and Adiscosa.
Would the plan go for a second? We're gonna make X amount of capacity in three years, five years, seven years?
Absolutely, right. Well, with the new, I guess, Brandon, what he's done and, you know, putting together our master plan and what we think we're gonna have, commercial and residential, things like that. So we'll kind of plan the water around that. But again, if things change, you know, we can move things around, but let's put it in place now so we see it, you know, where we're headed. And then, you know, as things develop, it'll also help attract, you know, more economic development, just like with the sewer.
Yeah, finance is important.
Yes, yeah, finance is important.
So is something you'd recommend for the proposal to be gathered for, or estimated cost?
Absolutely, yeah, I can do that. I can put a proposal together, and that way it gives the commissioners and the mayor and you guys a chance to look at it, and then we can come to an agreement on something and then look forward.
Here's a question that you did get. I don't want to waste too much time if we have to wait for the next meeting to approve the proposal. Would there be a way where it doesn't necessarily need to board actions to approve proposal? Could be something we would do silently, or we have to ask?
Like the proposal from Ida?
If it falls within our budget allocations?
Do you, what do you, do you have an idea of what the proposal might cost? I mean, is that something that's gonna be included in that?
My cost will be included in it, yeah. I don't have a roundback number right now.
So we all can approve, I mean, make this recommendation of approval pending, you know, legal review, and as long as it's under our statutory guidelines.
So then our budget. Any other questions or thoughts? The proposal gets all the.
That's an option.
All right, so I believe I heard there's a motion to direct the city engineer to engage in a water plan based on our comprehensive range and proposal to be reviewed by the board and approved if the demand is met. All right, for the second, item headed to the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, let's do that. Thank you. Number four, discuss, consider, and take possible actions to amend the fiscal year '24, '25 budget to include pay adjustment for police officers. So I went back to something I think we talked about since, something I have with the Valerie Act, spoke about also, spoke with Chief. In our budget that we approved, there were several benefits and salary increases that are part of it. What I think we can look at is the police officer. We're looking at record inflation. The city's budget is very tight. This is one of the largest budgets, you know, in the past. We did include quite a bit in there that we haven't been extensive, you know, we allocated work with stuff. And in some cases, like our land clearing increase, or park size, or porta jons for the park, the library aspect, but I think within those three items, we can make room for giving our police officers a raise. I think it reaches those three full-time officers in ransom number. So if those are currently making a good $20, $21, bring them to $22 for those three full-time police officers. That would be across $6,240. We already included about $1,896 in non-recent part of overtime. But then we also added clerks, and in discussing with Valerie, that may not be completely necessary. But then we also have, am I wrong? Okay, well, then we also have, you know, the land clearing aspect, I'd also consider it. Or the library would also be, I would have it proven, but also somebody that I think you talked at least to Amy about with the potential for grants, funding that. Yes. So something I want to bring up, we wanted to give those three full-time officers a $1 an hour raise. If we could do $6,240 from the library line item to the salaries on item two, Chief. That include, that already, we've already done, yeah. All right, all right, so move my motion to move $6,240 from the library line item to the salaries to provide a $1 an hour for full-time officers. So the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. All right, number five, discuss, consider, and take possible action for mowing within the easements in the city. And I have what to put on here. I know we've talked about it before.
Yeah, I just want to do some part of the.
I like it. I know there's some considerations we need to think about. The city used to mow those easements right away, so along the sides of the roads. There's considerations to be mindful of. There's damage there, you know, on some of those property. However, the city used to do it, and it looked a whole lot better.
If he wants to do it, he'll do it. I just want him to come up with a word. That's my one year question.
My recommendation is just to stay off of individuals' properties. That's all you can open yourself up to your risk. And maybe if there's a fence too, I mean, just stay X amount of feet off the fence line or something, but just make sure we're not taking on.
So at six feet, they'd be, the city would be eight feet from the pole to the street.
I'd say I want them to walk it before they know it. It would be like my apartment, and then maybe stay five feet off the fence line. It's gonna get hit.
That's also a assessment of your risk.
Not only that, it makes the city look better. So I might say what we do, like with, take the consideration first, to walk then and make sure that nothing.
A motion has been made to direct public works to mow the right ways. With first blocking the property off the fence line. Is that, I agree with you. Okay. For the second? Item has been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes. All right, number six, discussion on public insurance. We'll go ahead.
Yeah, I haven't got the story information down, because we have to submit, we have to fill out forms in the name of the business that I trust.
We'll bring it back. All right, number seven, discuss, consider, and take possible actions to direct the city engineer to assist with development site packages for consideration, possible submission of economic development leads provided by greater SATX. Again, this is something we discussed last Friday at the workshop about utilizing a few pre-planned properties or packages to be submitted for consideration with certain leads that were received from the governor's office of businesses interested in moving to Texas. We discussed it, but I want to put it on to these board action to direct, so is there be some cost or time? So the Greater SATX, that organization we joined maybe six months ago?
Uh, we joined it like November.
Okay, and in that, it's an economic development organization that represents several different communities and counties. I'm sure other organizations.
Yeah, they, they have smaller ones.
Yeah, but they're an economic development focused group. And what they do is help with, there are members, which were members of, promote the area, who promote their communities. And there's several degrees of economic development, workforce training, business retention, business traction, all kinds, small business support, community development, the things we've been working on. And what they'll, they have, where they get those leads from the governor's office. So like if Samsung or Toyota or those big names, they want to come to Texas, they'll contact the governor's office. And they'll say, we need X amount of acres, we need X amount of electric, X amount of water, whatever they need. And the governor's office takes those requirements for sure and then sends them out to, to different economic development entities. And since we're small, we don't have our own economic development corporation, Greater SATX gets those leads. And so for any of those, as those leads go out, then organizations, economic development corporations, or our partners like Greater SATX, they can submit specific sites to the governor's office for those businesses that need a location to be considered. Yes, it'd be inside. Well.
We don't have, we don't have any property list.
Well, so that's. Well, and that's something, we discussed a few properties that are available that are underdeveloped. T and I recently came in today. There's a few other properties we discussed that have vacant land that could be considered, and the property owners have agreed, in some cases, to allow us to put these packages together. The packages consist of like a topo, you know, it's a topo.
Yeah, survey parcels, utility needs, flood, flood drain map.
Phase one environmental. And so if we have these, when the lead comes out, and if we have the packages on specific properties, we can immediately submit it to be considered. And after that.
And it's not to us, the, they, it's not ethical and.
It's for the property owners, just like this.
Yes.
And they have to agree ahead of time to give us, they gotta give us the survey.
Do, do we need to have like a consent between the landlord and the city that they're allowing us to send again?
We probably should.
Um, that's something Dave brought up, I thought we had you before, but, um, nobody had an answer for us. We should do that, but.
Yeah, we'll come back later and say, you're buying.
Are you advertising the property?
It's very specific. It's not like they're listing it. It's just like, hey, if they wanted to be considered for these big businesses, in a lot of cases, those are those big companies that need various specific sites. And it might probably say no, but if we, maybe put in 100, maybe we get one, probably worth it. Yeah.
So I mean, T and I, like if they came to us, you know, to advertise or to be a part of this, to, you know, part of Austin, land and everything, so that would be easy to have decided to consent and say, and yes, we consent to offer X amount. That would be easy to have decided to consent and say, and yes, we consent to offer X amount of acres in this general area.
There's four property owners specifically that are open to it.
Yeah, I'll get that drafted.
Do you need an action for that or just, we've already talked about it. So it would create value, so if put in a big facility, uh, it would create jobs, you know, people have jobs, they wanna live near it, they work. But mainly create value.
So I'm happy to sell those.
The idea really is what we want is retail, and so like with T and I, they have sixty-eight acres or so. That could potentially be available and they wanna wait for the retail frontage. But the frontage is only gonna go so far, there's still the areas behind it. And the faster, you know, we can create value, the more our tax rate can actually do. And so I, I don't think we've had a tax rate issue, I think we've got a values issue. And bringing those big investments, some of them billion dollar investments. Multi-billion dollar, you know, facilities they need to build, a lot of jobs, that's a lot of value. Ideally, you know, we, we wanna be involved to, to help kind of guide that process of, you know, reserve or frontage, that's why we're doing our lands plan. So that when they come in for zoning requests and if it takes away, you know, the retail, we could, you know, we have that comprehensive plan to say. No, well, this doesn't match our comprehensive plan, but you can do it all back here, uh, which does match the comprehensive. Correct, correct, and so what I need from the proper, what we need from the property owners is a survey and phase one, that's the most expensive. And then talking to IDA, those other items are fairly easy, I mean, their topography maps, their GIS maps, stuff that, you know, engineers have access to that we don't. I didn't want to add to any of that.
Yeah, it, it's kind of like a very high level feasibility, kind of a study, Commissioner, so. It's pretty fairly easy to put together and if we're putting a survey and, um, some of those other items, property owner, sorry. Um, then, uh, there's not much cost to the city for the work that we're doing, so.
Right. Let's use it. Yes, I agree, and, and, you know, they can always say no, you know, it's.
Yeah.
It's something we're trying, it's all.
They give us a chance.
Gives us a chance.
It's a, but that's how all these other big projects that they're landing on the south side. Cause they're putting in information for them, if we don't throw anything in, we're not gonna get it.
Right. They're probably looking at several, many, many sites, tens of maybe hundreds of sites.
And our advantage is the road was now.
And we just wanna be on the, we want them to look at us, they can say no, let's get as many eyes on the law army. Alright, motion has been approved, or sorry, a motion has been made to approve item seven. Which is to direct city engineer to assist with development of site packages for consideration and possible submission. Of economic development needs by greater SATX, is most correct?
Yes.
Alright, is there a second, item has been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Number eight, discussion and update on sewer.
Nah.
So there's several things, uh, you know, there, we've kind of gone back and forth, uh, the last few months, I will, I will say that thanks to what the lady. We had a couple of hiccups, we talked about, um, you know, one being as to amend our grant language. So, and this came up about July, we need to amend our grant language, uh, to allow for SAWs to own the sewer line. The other hiccup we had was, uh, our reimbursement process in Bear County. You know, it, uh, took us about four months, well, not one month, three months, ten to twelve weeks to get reimbursed. Basically from, as the invoice came in from April to July, we were still waiting on reimbursement. From stuff that we had paid in, in March and April, we couldn't keep going. Uh, meeting with Commissioner Clay Flores, she has, uh, made a few phone calls to Bear County. This last submission, which came in in July.
About two weeks.
No, no, about two weeks, a major improvement, we're really getting in a bind there. Uh, and unfortunately that impacted this project, in my opinion. Um, since then though, communicating the progresses, uh, we've added, and kind of overcoming those two hurdles, hiccups. Um, you know, Valerie, uh, IDA and, and South Texas Infrastructure Group. Have been communicating to try and get back on track, keep moving forward, and I know y'all have been working, you know, communicating with these hiccups. Um, are, are, are moving forward, I know y'all have been working, you've provided some updates, so at this time, I'll turn the floor over to you. Provide us all with a comprehensive update of where we are.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't know if I missed it.
Yes, yes, and that's, that's, that's basically.
The key milestones.
Yes, the, the, that's the major part of it is the key milestones and that's, that's exactly what we're trying to reach. So, best thing is that we're looking forward to seeing what the mild now for a better reason, right? Now, now we're looking at, uh, main bit to be basically complete the project be shovel ready. And that's, that's the idea, it's be shovel ready, in the very beginning when we started this project, the idea of to, to get to this point. Uh, being shovel ready is where we wanna be, with a set of plans, with the right way already in place. And all of the permits, the environmental's already done and so on and so forth. Uh, to give you a, a perspective, I, I showed you a plan up there, I gave you a right away plan that I. I wanna make sure that we take it back because it is right way and you gotta be very careful with right ways, uh, or easements. So, so the idea is to, to basically understand if that project is gonna be in town, right? And this is what we're gonna impact, so the impacts of this project is gonna be in easements. Easements that are gonna be on the east side of I thirty-five. From sixty-four, which is that dozen roundabout all the way around, all the way down to the intersection of, uh, uh. Uh, of the sixty-inch sewer line that we're gonna be connected to. Within the next couple of months, there's several things that are gonna happen, which is, uh, uh, we gotta send out the letters, which, uh, by the way. Uh, I'd like to see, maybe we can go to executive session once we get to a point that I need to just speak to the council for, for a couple of minutes on, on. Land acquisition, um, but at this point, what we're doing is we're gonna send out letters to the property owners for two things. One is that since, uh, we've been working with SAW, SAW wants us to make sure that we have an easement within the properties. So there's several types of easements that we need depending on the depth of, of, of the, uh, of the project. So far, we've been working, uh, uh, we've already put all those easements within, within the project. Uh, there's some easements that are bigger than others, but there's reasons for that and I'll explain to you in a little bit on that. Uh, so the other hurdle that we, hurdle that we get, we, we're gonna be finishing the right way map and the right way. Uh, parcel schedule by the mid-November, so that we can in December get started, you know, start the acquisitions of, of these easements. Uh, the other thing that we gotta get by December is gonna be the, the, uh, Bear County and SAW be added to.
I, I would love to come over here.
Oh, sure, yes, I wanted to see that, so I understand.
I just wanted to see this, to see this.
Okay, so in working diligently with the Chrissy Three, we've been working with them to make sure that they add SAW as a sub-recipient. And hopefully we can get that done by December, which is something I'm gonna work with the, uh, Commissioner off of. The, uh, final demand will be done at the end of the year, by December, uh, uh, the end of December. And we'll be starting acquisition at the beginning of the year, which will be January through May. So by the time we're done with the, the engine will be done in December. The right representation will start in January and it will be finished in May. So once May is done, we can turn over a shovel-ready project. And at this point, basically it's just to start construction by the summer of twenty twenty-five. That's, that's what we got already at this point, we've been working also with the, uh, utility companies, which is the major one, which is CPS. And that's gonna be to be providing pro, uh, power to both the stations. Um, and we have also, uh, we've contacted the other utility company, the TNT. Uh, those are the major items that we, we gotta, you know, go around those, those type of hurdles. Um, but at this point, I'd like to see, maybe we can go into executive session to discuss the property acquisition.
Uh, so we'll, uh, need to go through, you know, our agenda, but, um, could entertain a motion to bring that item, to bring. Back that portion of the sewer update into executive session.
Sure.
Uh, as it does relate to real estate, so that would be. So we can entertain to bring back, uh, the aspect of right away acquisition to executive session. Mr. Martinez has made a motion to bring back the, um, acquisition of easement aspect of the update into executive session. So the item has been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we'll bring that item back.
And just to, just to finalize this, uh, so in working the public way, the, the environmental firm also. By the way, I'm sorry, pardon me, I got my team here, I got my engineers, the attorneys, the right away for this, you guys. So everybody's here, so just in case anybody has any questions, I apologize, guys. Uh, but, uh, that's, that's, uh. That's, uh, uh, basically an initial working on, one, one of the other major factors is also getting the phase one environmental done. We got the environmental engineers contracted since March and we, we, because of a couple of hiccups, we, we're, we're working with them to make sure that they, that in the next two months, they can. Continue working, they gotta do an ESA, which is an environmental phase count. So what they're gonna be doing is, uh, doing the, the, uh, uh. The phase one, which is testing soils throughout the project to make sure that there's no, uh, contaminants. And also looking at the waters of the US, which is the, uh, uh. The, the actual areas of where the river lies and also the creeks that we have throughout the, throughout our. Yes.
But that's just part of the.
It's part of the engineering, but. Yeah, the environment will be in, in the next, uh, two. The next two months that, that we'll be working with you guys. Now, the environments will also be asking for some, some meetings with you guys and the public and we'll have the public meetings. Uh, just to make sure that the public understands what the, the scope of the project is in the home. Uh, and what both proposing, uh, and what the other, uh, options are, but there, there are no other options except for one. Which can do nothing, uh, in our case, but, uh. In a nutshell, that's pretty much the, the whole sense of the project, uh, so good.
Yeah, I'd like to just recap, you know, the history of, you know, how long it's, it's taken us to get here, so I know that. South Texas has been working with the city of Bonarmi for almost a decade and trying to secure the funds, obviously, this whole project is being brought at a. No, no impact to the city in terms of taxes, both for all the design, planning, acquisition. And also the, the first leg of the construction through a federal earmark. Uh, and so we're very happy, we're very excited to see that this project is getting very close to being shovel-ready. Construction will begin in the summer of twenty twenty-five, uh, we've already received some communications to get onboard for, for the federal fund, so this is just, uh. A great story and, uh, you know, we've been reporting with SAWs, we communicated with them today, we spoke to Commissioner Clay Fotes, very supportive of the project and. We're just very happy that the state of the project is at.
Can you, uh, just speak to the history of that grant, the federal funds?
Yes.
And, and the, the grants that we applied for, the cities applied for in the past, how we obtained that grant? And where are those funds originally from?
Absolutely, so when the, uh, when the COVID crisis started, uh, the, uh, the Bear County Commissioner's Board received a, a large allocation. And so they, they, they made a call for projects, uh, and so we initially submitted the, the whole project, the planning acquisition and design. We actually were finalists to, to get that funding, but then it became very competitive.
When was that?
And that was, um, that was in ju, around between July and December of twenty twenty-two. And that was a time when, you know, South Texas infrastructure at risk, no payment, just, uh, you know, being a, a good neighbor to the city of Bonarmi. Uh, putting a lot of time and energy, a lot of effort into putting schematics, budgets, uh, and essentially was able to secure, uh. A two-point-nine-nine million dollar grant with no match to the city of Bonarmi for the planning acquisition and design. With the idea that this was gonna be completed by the time that ARPA funds, uh, are set to sunset, and that's why it's so critical that we meet deadlines. Because there are all kinds of times that if this money isn't spent, it'll, it'll go back to the treasury. And so that, that award was made.
U.S. Treasury.
The, the U.S. Federal Treasury, these are federal funds, there's a lot of oversight, it's already been procured, uh, and so at, at that point, South Texas, uh. Really took, took it upon themselves and as soon as that, those funds were secured around February, March, um. We were able to leverage those planning funds with Congressman Tony Gonzalez, and so we applied for earmark and so we were one of ten communities that was selected. To get funding for the construction and, and that's a program where the, we're gonna get federal funds to construct. Part of this, part of this great project. And again, that was a, a time when, uh, the ARPA monies hadn't been necessarily finalized, but there was already some preliminary talks and that. I think allowed us to, to get first in line, uh, we had a ceremony where Tony Gonzalez came in, you know, we walked at the site. We were all here and we're excited and I know that there are more funds to come, but what's critical is that we start construction this summer. Uh, we really can force this slow this down, uh, the commissioner is counting on us, we communicate with her constantly and, and it's, it's critical that we. Meet all the milestones that we set out here in the gap chart.
I wanna also add to, to, doing the grant funds is, is very important for, for, for the city. Uh, we're able to capture those grants in working with the, the city of Bonarmi for the last eight years, basically, we've been working on adding, uh. To our application to the water loan board, we're trying to see if we can get the water loan board money for the past eight years. We started this back in twenty sixteen when we started applying to water loan board and we still do it at this, at this time. But every year is the same, uh, uh, uh. We cannot compete with other cities that are already shovel-ready or other cities that basically already have infrastructure of their own. That need to expansion on their, these are for areas that, that need sewers. So it's really hard to compete with those cities, so we always end up in the late, uh, thirties to fifties because we don't have the infrastructure in place. And, and basically on a yearly basis, we just applied this last year, we ended up in fifty, fifty-one.
Yes.
Uh, so, the same thing over and over every year, that we're gonna continue applying to make sure that they know we're here. The best thing to do with the state is always know we're here and you just stand up there and you just say, hey, guys, don't forget about me. The, the idea is, don't forget about me, is that when we go over there and we already have one point five million dollars to start a, a construction project. That belongs to, to the city of Bonarmi, that's basically eleven million dollars, eleven and a half million dollars. Is that to have a set of plans and say, okay, we got one and a half million dollars of grant for us to go ahead and take off. Here's a set of plans, can you, what can you leverage? How can we work to leverage between the one and a half that we have and what you guys?
And even getting to the fun, we were asking, we were ranking in the three hundred, four hundred, now we're at fifty. We're, we're positive that as soon as we're shovel-ready, we're gonna be in those first thirty positions, which are usually the ones that get funded. These are forgivable loans essentially, so it's, it's essentially a grant and that's, that's where we need to be. Shovel-ready is to me the, the most critical part of the, uh, situation and, and, you know, another two milestones that I know the mayor. Everybody helped was with the SAWs is, is gonna be taking over the maintenance and operation of this project in perpetuity and so they're. Uh, kind of the exercise that you're going to with the water, we already went through it for the sewer, so we're not just building the sewer for the needs of the city today. It's a sewer that's gonna fit the needs of the city for the next twenty years. So we've already looked at population growth, we've already calculated that, so this is, this is a project that's very future-looking, it's not just for today, it's, it's for, uh. Essentially for the next twenty years and that's, that's the SAWs criteria, that's what we believe in and that's what we're ready to deliver for the city.
So can you, what was that forgivable, um, are you talking about art and elegant?
That, yeah, that's the, the clean water state of all the funds and so that, that's. Yeah, it's all that you put fine.
We get, get better rankings.
We get, and, and we actually had a meeting in SAWs when the rankings came out, we saw that we were in the fifties and. I mean, that's exciting, but still, it's, it's really the thirty, between one and thirty that wants to get invited to the block for that forgivable loan. And that's, that's where we, and the forgivable loan essentially is just a grant. And that's, that's what we.
We can do it better that way.
Well, this is it, this is it, just getting, what, what the state doesn't wanna do, and then correct me if I'm wrong, the state doesn't wanna spend money. They, they don't wanna hold money for a city, or municipal or county or, or municipal, uh, uh, district, right? Uh, and hold the money and say, okay, they're gonna do a project and, well, they're gonna get set times together, okay. By the time they get set time together or they procure, procure an engineer and so on and so forth. It just becomes time lapse and when somebody else is already ready to go. Especially a city that. Especially a city that already has the infrastructure and they need to take care of some colonias, as they call them, colonias in the areas that, that basically are, are, uh, don't meet the criteria for.
And one of the, one of the big things that we encounter with the water development board is that whenever there's a delay, there's a huge price escalation in construction labor. So if they get an eight million dollar grant, but it takes them three or four years, that's sixteen million, all right? And so they almost threw that money away and had to reapply and all that. So their hope is that as soon as you, you get awarded, you're procuring construction, because they, they want you to lock in those costs. And that's, that's a critical part of, of the aspect, and there's, there's very few communities that go through this process, but, but the ones that do are the ones that are really successful. And you're usually looking at your Harris Counties, uh, Bear Counties, Dallas Counties, because they, they have the ability to undertake this. But thanks to the grant that we received, now, now we're able to do it here at no cost to, to the taxpayer.
Commissioner, do you all have any specific questions?
No. I made a lovely video from my dad. I do thirty.
Well, we'll get, we'll get to that one.
We'll get there.
Yeah, we'll get to that one.
We'll get to that.
We'll get to that.
I'd like to see.
Yeah, we'll get there, uh, we're still on just the general update, let's finish our update. Uh, Kush Montes, do you have specific questions?
Well, I'm ready, I was just thinking about what you're talking about.
No, it's our pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah, um, we, uh. How many properties are we looking at?
We're looking at fifty-nine more, fifty-nine, is the answer.
So is it realistic that we'll have all of those by now?
Yeah, wow. Yes, so, you know, the, the way that we're gonna do it is, once we send out the initial offer letter, we'll have thirty days to send the final offer letter. Whomever, for whatever reason, whether they have state issues or they don't agree, we'll start the payment domain process. Uh, we've done hundreds of domain domains, and we'll take possession over the land, which is really what we need within that timeline.
How, how long does that take, if we have to go to that?
We are gonna talk about this in the executive session.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
But we can talk about like, kind of, big, big.
Yeah, generally, but then, there is, once you file the lawsuit, you get the, the special commissioners appointed within the first week. They need to provide a twenty days notice, and then another twenty days notice. So really, within forty-five days, you're having your special commissioners hearings, these are informal, they're not, they're nothing big. Usually they take about half an hour, a lot of them are over Zoom. When, when you're talking about easement, you know, there's very little arguments that can be provided. Uh, and we think that specifically for the, the critical path, which is gonna be crossing the Deana River and bringing the lift station, uh, is wanna be in construction this summer. We can, we will have all those shovel, uh, uh, shovel-ready parcels that we need to have, uh, for the construction. And, um, you know, we, we do projects like this all the time, so I'm, I'm very confident in those timelines. As a matter of fact, I was just wrapping up a special commissioners hearing, uh, just before this, and, you know, we have a very favorable outcome.
Um, so for the, was it how much should we get earmarked?
Yes.
So I guess that would obviously start at the connection with SaaS?
Yes, the idea, the idea depending on, on, on cost right now.
Yeah.
It's cost or the majority is, uh, it basically is to take care of our, our acquisition first. Construction costs can be fully taken care of the lift station and go. That's, that's all we wanna do at this point, with the preliminary construction money. Now, even further, to get further on the previous conversation that I had with the water development board. If we have a lift station on our side, that's even closer for us to make sure that we rack even higher with the water development board, to make sure that they know that we have a, an actual, actual system within our area to connect to. Even closer without crossing barriers like, I think, ever. But if we get across the river with a one point five, one point two, uh, that, that would be excellent, that would be.
But I also think there's a lot of potential in the area with, with developers, businesses, uh, through the public-private partnership, uh, clearly often getting help. Trying to put something together, start piecing it together. There's a lot of people that have, um, ultimately, the entire city needs sewer. And it's been a big limiting factor for growth fifteen years, we're seeing the growth all around us, why tax limits, we don't have sewer. And that water's a question, but we haven't had this sewer forever. Uh, and it's been a big limiting factor for a lot of the business. Ultimately, we wanna bring sewer to the entire city. I've heard some very sad stories of people that don't have sewer, have old systems, there's health concerns, environmental concerns, there's varying costs. You know, motivations to why we need this sewer project. Uh, I hope that a lot of our neighbors will be able to, to work with that. I think between us, we're a small community, we know a lot of those landowners, uh, and I hope the community sees the benefit of why we need this. And ultimately, it brings sewer to everybody. But I think those businesses and those landowners and those developers are coming, we're having those conversations. It's just been such a far-reaching objective. Now that we have hard dates, like you're saying, we get a shovel-ready project, we start construction. It's a lot easier to make that pitch than the development community for those public-private partnerships that can help finish the project. And then we'll be at a point where it's, then it's about bringing it to the rest of the city, uh, and create the value, you know, to start looking like the states do.
The biggest, the biggest point that the mayor just brought up, which is the public, and, and I've been sort of, by, by developers on the south side, uh, and others, but, uh, that, that public-private partnership is so important for the city that it will make it work for everybody. And everybody would be benefiting out of this, uh, public partnership. And hopefully, we can get this project a hundred percent done by the time we, uh, before everybody else knows it. The idea is to get to I thirty-five and sixty-one four, to see if we can provide for the future of, 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 uh, you know, the greater San Antonio, uh, area to provide these, uh, facilities that we were talking about earlier, Mayor and, and, uh, Idol.
Uh, otherwise, we are gonna lay on a grant fund, that slow process.
Yes.
Quickly get together.
Okay, so we're gonna do the conjunction though, we're still gonna go after another grant.
Oh, yeah.
And it's gonna be through the Bear County though, again?
The one, I'm sorry.
Is it gonna go through Bear County again, that process, or is it gonna have to go through the city or the, the additional lines through the grant?
I think it's, it'll be a combination of both. You know, the, uh, the county has already let us know that they, they wanna participate in a lot of the construction components. And, uh, having, having the county as a stakeholder is just, uh, you know, gives you a lot of points. And so if we could use them as a fiduciary, it's that much better.
So between the county, the, the, the conference office, of course, and, and, um, uh, private-public partnerships. And what, well, the idea is that we're not gonna stop with the water development board.
Everything.
Everything that we get, and whatever comes in, believe me, as soon as you have a set of plans, everything that comes in, we'll, we'll continue working on. And doing the expansions that need to be done within the existing infrastructure setup plan that you already have.
Which is the most important, and when we mentioned, uh, Bear County, again, the good relationship we've built with them and all the support. Uh, we may be able to sweep some more ARPA funds, because once we're shovel-ready, they're, they're gonna have a lot of projects that they just are not gonna be able to see through. We can say, hey, uh, Commissioner's report, we're ready to go for bids, if you will allow us, we're ready to spend your money, and it's use it or lose it, so.
Absolutely.
Uh, you know, they, they, they may not afford to, uh, it's, it's, you know, believe it or not, it's difficult to spend money because of these wrap-up periods. So as we get closer to those deadlines, that's gonna be the time to, to submit some white paper or some requests of how we can, uh, we can spend the money beneficially.
Uh, is there a match to those brands that you know, or is it a hundred percent?
For the ARPA, no, it's a hundred percent.
It's the same, it's the same, hopefully we get to the same process, right, that's, that's the idea. So we've been very close to, uh, as you know, with the Commissioner's office and, and she's been very good to Bonnaroo. So, uh, hopefully we can continue that relationship that we, that we've been working.
Can you say anything else?
Good, so the next little, uh, is on, is Sunday question, is that right? One, ten, seven, two?
Yes.
That's right.
Very good.
I have one last question on, uh, the, the process, the initiative, the simple reading of language of the grant. Is that based on feedback from your parents, that feedback from Jacob? Or is that just with the last deadline that we need?
No, 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 that's a mediation that we've had with the county, but therefore, because the Commissioners' Club meeting, like, right around that time, and they're gonna make some changes to some ARPA programs generally.
There you go.
Yeah.
We're gonna switch later?
Uh, I don't know if ours is gonna be on there, but. So we're, we have, yeah, we need to work together on this then, uh, because there are, I think, there's two items. One, it has to get updated from federal grant for, to add SaaS to the recipient, and then we also have letter, and then, then to, uh, allow for a SaaS to have ownership of maintenance. There's two, and it sounds like y'all are on one, and we can push it together, try to combine those.
Absolutely, yes.
There are two things that we're, have two different grants, if I'm understanding that right. And I know we've talked about both, uh, and that issue. And we're all coming together, we're in our weekly calls every Friday, truly combined forces, so we're not each, that's, you know, working in different directions. Um, okay.
Did you get your breakfast ready?
Yeah, I think we're accomplishing it now.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Anybody, anybody out there? Okay. Um, any?
I, I would like to add something that we did speak to the gardeners' office about maybe having a breakfast for them. Uh, just kinda thanking them, but also maybe getting ready for the next phase, so, um. Wanna get this, everybody's, yeah, well, he's gonna be coming down for a couple of weeks, so.
He's just here.
Yeah.
Yeah, more work.
Perfect, thank you.
Good. Jaylen.
Awesome, awesome.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. We'll bring this back in another session. All right, we're gonna go to number nine, update on financial audits.
Um, I could finish, um, and, uh, the rest of the, I have to, keep finishing, so it's ready as well.
Can you give the, and then the other day, you gave some, you gave us a percentage of completion. If you had about one through a hundred. Hundred, maybe, till we get to one, two thousand. Twenty, one hundred? When will that go a hundred percent, since it's all, it's all the, the R C A? So we can see it. And it's, they're voting it in too.
I submit everything to the local.
Right, and then they need their portion, yeah, so we're a hundred percent now, or something, right? And then what about?
I have this, uh, there's, I have a, um, two suits, and then, most of it is the same thing, with some reports I have to finish.
So where do we get that, two?
I don't know, for the next season.
Just the time to start continuing.
All right, let's go to number ten, uh, update on progress of line board at comp setup.
Um, so, it's over that comp today, um, daily, though, we're getting reports out of the water writer within the, um, for, I still, I still need to talk to her about it. Um, and it's an app comp, the ticket writer is complete, and, um, as of this point eight, we'll be able to, we'll be using the new ticket writer, we can download it directly, we don't have to use a manual input anymore. Which is a big, big, uh, we have our shoulders.
So it helps both sides, right?
Yeah.
A lot.
So that'll be done, and then they are finishing up on the actual software.
Have they given us a deadline? Like, when?
Um, I'm just kidding, we're having me, uh, either tomorrow morning, yeah, so I, I can have runs for calling.
But, yeah, or can you just push him for a deadline, and put that in the report and send it to?
Well, so what happens early when they're not finished is they got the download from Tyler, which is the system that we use. Uh, it's corrupted, so it messed up what they had, but I'm gonna go through it, sad guys, there are no crap from the corruption from the kind of downloads. So, pretty long.
Let's just put some pre-bait. Hard day, we're going.
Anything else? Any questions, other questions? All right, so to number eleven, discuss, consider, and take possible actions to fence in City Park. Let me sure.
We've had a couple of islands that's in there, the, the, I think it's pre-joint?
Where the tide.
Agony? Couple of tiny channels, so. People don't appreciate the mess, it's kind of a lack of.
What are you visiting, uh, fencing, that's quite a bit.
Quite a bit of damage, it's been also.
Yeah.
Can you use the facility? I don't know.
And it's sort of like, um, it's not aggressive, but like, hardy, hardy.
What is that?
Like, what's, what's the problem, like, hardy, hardy, like?
Hardy, hardy?
Yeah.
Hardy, hardy.
Hardy, hardy, yes. You know, like motion lights, um, things that are for.
So you take the opportunity away, basically, you mess in the opportunity.
It's very impressive.
I like that, uh, my, my theory, the fence is expensive, be, really expensive. Uh, but something potentially to do with stages, maybe? I also like the idea of, of having a camera, a live feed in the city hall and the police department. Now we have twenty-four seven coverage, I understand the police officers are always there, but adding some kind of night vision, maybe a few hundred dollars on.
Yeah, because these cameras, I mean, we get the advantage on camera, but it's, you can't really see anything.
You can put a Wi-Fi extender, put a tree, um, up in a tree, and I have these nests, I'm not saying they could be, but the ones I have, I can see black, at night, I can see really well.
I thi- I think, uh, I think with a video system that can at least capture a face, um, would be a good start, because the issue is that we don't know who's doing it, so we can't put stop to it, right, and go with the camera. I mean, that's, those are the eyes that we don't have that are out there.
Plus, we'll share videos out, like, these people, you know, we'll look at them.
Right, so if we catch, if we capture someone's face, we can put it on social media, the city can put it on social media. A criminal might see it and say, you know what, I better stop, you know what I mean?
A bomb might see that one.
Well, right, recognize, you know what I mean? Um, so, yeah.
Uh, I'm curious, we could look at some cost options, if you two could take that on. I like the camera route, we can look at the fence route, uh, you have some other idea of motion sensors, you know, VR. There actually have risen this physical budget, maybe it's do something.
How about gates? I wonder if the tax administration's got a roll closet, so they can do it from a part of the residential access.
Well, it's hard to say which way is they're going, uh, it could be some from there, we know for sure some are from there.
No, if those kids be fine.
A lot of people use the.
We're all bad.
We know it's been there before, yes. Yes, and I know exactly where they're going, we talked to those parents, and these street people disappointed, but I know the last would be.
The last one was a grown teen.
Was a grown old.
Yeah.
Who does need living.
I know, yeah, but, uh, still, uh, we, we get there, most parks have gates. And then we get the, the, the.
I mean, especially when the parks close, I just hope it creates something that we have to do, you know? But the thing is, that perimeter's not fixed either, if you really wanted to get there, they could. And before that happens there, there was a walking path. Uh, and where people are sleeping there, and that issues this area just being neighbors, uh, prior to being here, there's, there's no fence, you know?
The place also might do, with the parents, that place, uh.
Yeah.
Say, it's supposed to be, it's gonna make it easier.
Makes it easier too.
They're still preparing, and then maybe might propose that, uh, that I think, yeah, you could, but, call fence or something.
We're gonna have to officially use the impound lot.
That's in the, that's in the future. Well, that may always, then, get in there to get the impound lot.
And delay any.
They're gonna get in there.
So let's look at, for example, if you have short-term ideas, you know, motions are light, let's look at the camera cross. And then let's look at an incremental, the gate, open the gate, which is part of the status, it's closed, it, that's.
Yeah.
It can be spoke, my fear is, they're, they're gonna get in there, bring them in there. Uh, but then long range, as we're looking at our capital improvement projects like the impound lot, we need to be pricing fencing any of this.
How much, how much would brighter lighting be?
That's my question.
Yeah, if we light up the apartment good enough.
Like floodlighting too much.
Yeah.
And put their own camera, smiling their camera signs.
Maybe even, you know, have the actual, uh, and you have someone that's a panel person come and look at the property and be able to say, how many we need to cover the whole thing? Let's say maybe even put up like, building cameras, just as a deterrent, visual deterrent.
Let's look at some options, I hope you can bring us back with a few, like, hey, short-term, some medium, some short-term, medium-term, long-term. Let's get pricing for everything.
You might have to, a lot of money to price. So not much, you know? So not too much, you know? I'm not getting no site up there.
Yeah, their solar, that's kind of the.
They could have lights on, if like, potentially tall.
We'll need some tall lights, but they can't break.
Sounds like we're all in agreement, we're gonna do something. I'll break that, hopefully bring back the pricing.
All right, so to number twelve, discuss, consider, and take possible action on annual, uh, shelter project, Commissioner Griesman.
Okay, we, uh, we've got a couple of, uh, estimates.
We did, but you know, we're on our books, and it's only been Friday, so.
We have one quote that we looked at last week, and we said, eh, that's a lot, we'll see two more.
Yeah. Maybe a seat cheaper? Um, instead of attaching it to this second tank, but. And, uh.
Then the permitting process, you know, put it at seventy-ten. Uh, that's. Yeah, I expect it to be shared, uh, I've had some, that is very, very first. Something we could look into, if you look at the cost, uh, I don't know, how much a five hundred down, ten, because last month it was fifteen hundred down, ten, it was sixty-five hundred. Those two years ago. We can look at all options, what's more, just the pump or the tank? Yeah, forty thousand. Let's, still try and get to more bits, maybe, uh, if you're willing to act specially to, once you have a number. Come on.
This, he's on three.
He said, come on. Come on with that bit.
In the meantime, we'll. In the meantime, we'll continue with what we have in place, that way, you know, the city can take the time and, for, two weeks.
Two weeks? We put, we post something like, two weeks deadline, if anybody wants to do this, do this. For two weeks, put it on the Facebook page, put it on the website, and come back. I cost money, uh, yeah, because, isn't it, I mean, it's not over the threshold.
It's not.
Okay, however we can. All right, we'll get to this, bring this back.
Uh, number thirteen, discuss, consider, and take possible action to terminate the professional service agreement of South Texas Department of Service. Any others waiting for two, Commissioner Griesman?
The reason I put that, um, on the, is that we have to add a update in months. People around here are, you don't know the people around here like to, of a foreign race here. If you get out of hand, very difficult. So once in a while, we, we need an update, uh, we had this one, I don't know, that put a little star on the table, we know. We need update, so we can tell people what's happening. I know that the project will probably take, what, like, ten years to get it done? They have to know, basically, it's gonna be done tomorrow, you're gonna have, I worked for the government forty-two years. Doesn't happen, but the time it's done, it's already up, so. We even have that, even if it's through the mayor, and even if, we haven't, we haven't heard anything one of us. The last time we met, what, six, seven months?
Yeah, so Commissioner Griesman, there were a couple of pickups that we did have, and, and I would also say, progress slowed early August, you know, in your month chap. Uh, uh, Ida and Valerie, and, uh, I, after our last meeting, we got together, said, hey, we need regular updates, we've solved these two problems, we did have two problems, we had to fix the grant. Uh, and the funding was too slow, but I think we fixed those two things, we want to get everybody reorganized, and, uh, our city has been, there's city engineer involved, there's city attorney involved. Bring the team together, it's getting more intensive, we need back on track, we will have weekly updates now.
Well, maybe you have to do a thing, because we can.
Well, no, that just started last week, you know, I'm saying, moving forward, we need to have that, and I would say that, everyone must be aware of that. But I would say that anybody beyond the call that was posted, not too, not too.
We have, some of that is like a workshop session.
Since, when we can do that, I mean, moving forward, we are oriented, we, uh, solved those hiccups, uh, and, and I think we, we got there.
And not, I mean, that gives us a lot of army service.
No, not, ma'am, Captain, Commissioner, we've been working on the army search for the past eight years already.
Eight years, probably you saw something covered, you saw that.
Well, again, and I think that we touched on it, uh, a little while ago, we've been working on the army search for eight years, constantly, yearly, and bringing it up to, to you guys, and asking for permission for us to apply again for the law of the onboard. That's been nonstop.
Commissioner, who's on your bike, I mean, we're gonna, our team is gonna be here all the time, I mean, from this point on, between now and maybe this, so, we're gonna be here for every board meeting that y'all have, so, you have no, there's no concerns that you're not gonna get an update from us, because we're gonna be here, and we're gonna be negotiating parcels, we're gonna be doing closing, so, uh, there's no, there's no risk that we're not gonna be here.
Okay.
Yes, yes. It's as good as gold, Commissioner.
Yes.
Good. Good.
We'll be here.
Anyway. And of course, any concerns, Commissioner, just call me, I guess, uh, I don't know, I know there's, you can't call me.
They can't call you at the same time.
Well, but i- if any concerns from the Commissioner, the Administrator, or, or mayor, of course, just call us, if there's any question. Now, and, and we'll discuss it later, but, but, there's been the times that we, we, we already have to call one-on-one on, on, on different issues pertaining to this, so, but, uh.
There's just a time to be, I think, we should take a lot of thirteen, I think, Commissioner, we agree, that, uh, we just didn't have all the information.
All right, no action on Thursday. Yeah, no action on Thursday, let's go ahead then.
Yeah, Commissioner, I just wanna say, yeah, we're, we're gonna start having these weekly, uh, meetings, and this is a touch point, and so, it could be a five, ten-minute call, it could be a thirty-minute call, if there's an issue, or they're having some challenges. Uh, but, you know, just so it's more transparent, and, you know, and things happen, trust me, so, if we come across some of that, we'll let you know as soon as possible, or I will, you know, as your city engineer, so that's always, usually, we call, so. Um, you know, uh, we put schedules together and, and we try and hit them, but, but things will come up, but you just need to know that, so, so that's what these weekly, weekly parts of the hall are gonna be, and so, you know, I'll work with, with these engineers to make sure that, that it's, there's more transparency. And so that when your constituents do ask about this project, you'll be educated, so it's moving, they did have a little pickup here, but it's still moving out here, so, so we'll make sure that, that things are back on here. Thank you, yes.
All right, number fourteen, discuss, uh, discuss, consider, and take possible action to address current force of efforts, chief.
Um, so, I kind of want to just bring it by, with the board, um, we have kind of configured our enforcement procedures and work procedures, um, looking at still continuously refining those procedures. Um, I just need to know, I know in the past, we fixed the letter, uh, we made the letter a lot better, uh, we had, we had gotten some things on, on the other one, please, about, but, I just want to get the board's insight as to how progressive we want to make the changes within the city environment. Um, the reason I really wanted to talk about this is because as, like, for example, this store project starts to take place, material starts being laid out, right, um, right, it's, I'm safe to say that, right, that, machinery, equipment, all this stuff is gonna be set out there, um, in the construction site. As a city, we need to start looking at changing the environment, because it will attract crime, uh, if we want to deter crime, we gotta do what's called crime prevention through environmental design, and code enforcement is a big part of that. All right, go ahead. Right, so it's a, it's a big part of that, so, if we want to be able to, as we grow the city and the population starts to come in, if we want to be able to have a good handle on the crime rates, we need to start now with public force, the, the tall grass ordinance, the, you know, the the updated building ordinance and, and all these things, I just need the support from the city when, if, in case people do start complaining, because the complaints will come. So, uh, first, I, so I see in the report, there's, um, not a whole lot of actions intended to say that you are now, like, you can say that nobody is about to take, you know, further actions. Well, what we're trying to do is, is we're trying to, we're trying to get, uh, compliance, right? We prefer compliance over issuing someone's ticket, that's five hundred dollars, right? So, you're not gonna see, we're trying to not issue any tickets as much, right, for tall grass, I mean, as, just on a simple finger, a lot of you guys have patients, but we're trying to get the compliance now. How does the city want to handle this as far as, you know, on a specific day, would the city like for me to send my co-re enforcement officer out there and make the long list of whoever it is that is monitoring that's out of regulations? And, and get the letters, um, because when they're gonna flood cities, the city hall, they're gonna want to know why, why is now something being done when it's been like this wherever? That is what the key phrase is gonna be, um, so I just want, I want to know that in my, I'm gonna have the support from the city, when those calls do come in, into the city hall and speak with, with the city administrator, or when they do present themselves here at, at city hall at a meeting, wanting to get answers from, from the board as to why is it all of a sudden issued that my fence has turned the way it is?
And I think what we're talking about, according to that education, like you mentioned, that the education process, they come to, you know, contact, there's a letter, and you've already did the letter, and let the letter walk on.
Right.
Official draft, uh, having the soft touches, but then that can only go so far, and that brings to be action.
Right, so.
We're following that process that we've all talked about, there, I might pull some board.
I did, I did want to clarify before, um, we had a suggestion that APOG would come in and help people with repairs, they were in need of repair, and I brought to some, uh, trainings, and then to APOG, they will not do structural repairs on houses. So if there's a code enforcement issue, APOG is not going to assist it, the only thing, the only thing APOG will do is they have a weatherization program, but the home has to be in good condition to qualify for that, so if, if somebody has a structural deficiency, like, uh, sustainability, APOG will help them.
They have to touch, but that's, that's really, they have, uh, there's different organizations that APOG works with.
My, my, I specifically spoke to APOG about this, and they said there, there's nothing that they need about weather classes.
They told us I wasn't had that.
Yeah, I, I spoke to APOG directly.
I know there's resources out there, we can find what those are, but it's not really on us, it's all us who identify the unhealthy, unsafe situations.
Right.
And identify those, you know? Um, and then from there, the feedback that, that we get, it's about going to install such a, such a process, and there's organizations that they can pursue, um, you know, so, if they need it, but knowing who's in need and who isn't, you know, would be valuable for them to have. Those that can comply, those that can't.
Right.
Is the city prepared to take on costs associated with condemnations when they do?
Uh, how long will it be getting forceful? It's a long process, too, you know, you went through these orgies, I mean, isn't that process, um, you know, maybe many months, six, plus. But then there's courts, then there's an appeals process, and if you can do, and then there was appeals to the board, uh, but it's also something else.
And then a unique instance, a unique, specific, verifiable instance that would be considered. It can go all the way to, to the county court, um, but what we're trying to say is that, is the city budget gonna be able to sustain spending a couple of thousands of dollars, like, ten thousand of dollars? And having to deal with a building that's structurally unsound, and the city has to be able to put the bill, to clean it up.
If it comes down, we need to learn the situation at the time, but as far as it's now, we can start making those steps in that direction to enforce city laws.
Right, and that's, that's part of the plan, right, so, if there is one of those instances, I will run into the board, you know, I'll present the case to you, that way the board can make.
We're gonna be doing that, we're gonna go through the steps.
Right.
But that's just on condemnations, like tall grass and stuff, you know, just on the cart launch, go forward. Like, no, no restrictions, just.
Well, since we're implementing a new process, I still like soft touch, and this is something that hasn't been moved in years ago.
Well, we've sent tons of letters, and, and it's not fine, so, but we're.
Right, so we, we've actually gained compliance.
Yeah.
Um, that was, one of the things that's been, you know, there is one example where we did send out the letter, they're working on it, they came, they showed the evidence of what they've done, and we're like, can we have an extension? So I talked to the sergeant, and, you know, I got in touch with them, he called in, they talked it over, and he's like, yeah, I'm gonna give the extension, so that's one of those that gets put in a pending, you know, file. Um, there's never really been a true code enforcement procedure, it's always just been reactive, so we're building, as we go along, I just want to get the city's blessing that when the complaints start coming, that the city's gonna stand firm.
You're going through the process we discussed?
Right. Yeah, we're doing a talk to us, we're going out there, trying to get touch in person, that doesn't work, it gets documented on the actual official list or process, then the letter gets sent out, the letter that, you know, that we redid, and then follow-up letter we sent after that, and then, you know, that's at the point where we get no reaction from somebody, that's when you kind of start writing the tickets.
Okay, I have one for closing line, I have two, then tomorrow, uh, there's the next.
Well, just specifics, later, don't, don't have new specific properties in this city.
Yeah.
Talk to them after, after class, so see that it was written, written, right? And if you have identified properties, by written complaints, then the chief will investigate.
I have a, Commissioner, I have a form that we kind of put together, and if you come across any, any building or any property, come to me, fill it out, and then we, we take that.
I'd sort of like to encourage them, driving together, hopping on a patrol car, driving around with each of the commissioners, uh, together, one at a time, and then. Well, if you like to point out, superior's probably very bright and open.
I did watch with them. Yeah, good deal, but sure, you gotta keep in mind, though, that hoping by this officer is also my C and E sergeant, and he goes to take fall, so, it's, it's kind of, I can't go pedal to the metal with him, because he does have, like, he wears different hats, you know what I mean? But, but we're gonna get it done.
I mean, I like your idea of once a week, you know, at least once a week, you're going around and looking at all those things.
And that's, and that's what I talked to him, I, I said, out of all of your days of the week, what day can you get to four hours to do just nothing but code enforcement? And he said Tuesday, so Tuesday is, Monday is because Monday is the day that we look at air, you know, we're on Friday night through Monday morning, um, we gotta put out fires and stuff like that sometimes, so Monday is not the day, but Tuesday will be code enforcement day. And Friday, uh, because I'm not even a second officer, being the code enforcement officer's assistant, that's, that's to say, so, you'll also be needed, so that, those are gonna be the two days. We're good with that.
I think you should cut that. We're gonna go ahead and move on, so we're right down to fifteen, um, we're gonna move into executive sessions, executive session, for Commissioner Reserves to be in executive session, session, first one to the provisions of the Texas W D X, increasing the limitation section five-five-one zero-seven-one, five-five-one zero-seven-two, five-five-one two-seven-four, need to, so. But it's time to move, we can go into, you know, private setting, and however, this time we have a bigger group who we need to talk about, uh, so this party to, uh, invite those that are associated with the N D S.
Oh, what's that? It is.